Today, we are joined by Marie Mousso Holland. She is a candidate for place six of the College Station City Council and is running against two other candidates in this race. So it's a three-way race. Welcome to Think Brazos. Thank you so much. So the first thing I wanted to ask you, before we get into who you are and that sort of thing, I wanted to ask you about the last-minute entry into this race. I think it was 15 minutes to spare and you jumped into into the race and made it a three-person race. What drove you to do that? What was the strategy?
There was zero strategy, other than I thought the deadline was the next day and I literally have to take one thing at a time because I just have a lot on my plate. So if like deadlines, that's pretty much when I'm gonna get the stuff done. So yeah, at noon, I was in Austin with a friend and looked up the paperwork to get it, get started on it. And then I realized that it was due at 5:00 PM that day. So we drove back really quickly and got that in. But I've been thinking about it for two months and had decided already. So it was just getting the paperwork in. There was no strategy. It was purely procrastination.
I used to have that issue in college with term papers. So I understand that totally. So you've been thinking about running for a few months before that. Is that what you said?
So decided that I was gonna run for a few months. So beginning of July, I had already pretty much decided. But I've been thinking about it for years. So me and my ex-husband, we'd talk in the backyard often for hours about everything that's wrong, top-down, you know, from local to the more national government. There you go. And so I don't know, I, towards the end of our relationship, it was like, hey, you know, like, let's stop complaining about this and actually do something about it. And while he still has some convincing to do, I'm, was kind of ready to jump in and go at it and do it.
All right. Well, for people who aren't familiar with who you are in College Station, could you give us a little bit more background of how you got up to this point of running for city council? What is your business? What do you do in town? How long have you been in town, first off?
Sure. Yeah, I'll start from the beginning. I came here for school, had zero intention of staying because who does, you know, unless you're a local. And I met a guy here and then he had an extra semester to do. So I got a job in town. We broke up, met my career ex-husband. That just all sounds so bad. But so we met at work at what is now cognizant. And so I stayed here. He's got family that's lived in town forever. So and then a few years into, so in 2012, I graduated. And then I had my daughter in 2016. And then I end up buying her daycare center in 2017. So I worked in IT and stuff. And I essentially, I was holding her. So it was her daycare center in a chair quite like this that I had donated actually to the daycare. So I was just feeding her and I looked down, the daycare had been for sale. And it was finally like, hey, it's your turn. Do you want it? And I looked down at her and, you know, I just thought, if I'm not willing to go and follow my dreams, like, how can I tell her she can be anything that she wants to be? I didn't want it to be an entrepreneur forever. I did, I almost completed the certificate of entrepreneurship at A&amp;M. We started the entrepreneurship society back then, too. So I just always loved entrepreneurship. And then Lemonade Day, I'd been doing that for almost a decade. So just everything entrepreneurship. I like innovation and creativity. It's not so much about not wanting a boss because I actually need that because I have pretty severe ADHD. So I mean, like a boss, like an accountability partner. But that's what got me into the daycare. And then, which, we'll loop back to that. But then bringing the, putting the daycare together, I had zero experience in business. So I'd taken classes and stuff, but never actually done it. So this came with employees and just all this stuff. So I mean, I started having panic attacks pretty immediately. And then I ended up buying the building. So I always had in my head, like, you know, buy instead of rent. And so that probably kept me from closing the daycare down 100 times, just because I was like, well, what am I gonna do with this building if I close the daycare? So it's just a lot of stress. I lost 30-plus pounds. I immediately had, I was breastfeeding my child up until then. And like, the stress impacts that a lot. So then that for a while. And then eventually, so that was in June, the April after that, I started a Facebook group that was called Women Entrepreneurs BCS. And I remember just hovering over that Facebook group and like on the create button, because even what eight, nine months after buying a daycare and running it, you know, kind of by myself, I was still like, you know, my, this, not courageous, but like, by, you know, willing to like call myself an entrepreneur yet, you know. So I'm glad I created the group and got over, you know, that mental hurdle. And that became the best thing in my life.
And what does it do?
Do. So essentially, we encourage women entrepreneurs to keep going when the going gets tough, kind of thing. So
It's a membership thing?
It is a membership. So we have a free Facebook group, which is how that started. And so there's about 1,800 women locally here in the community in that group. And so it's part business owners, part people that just want to support and like be involved. And then there's a paid membership that's at about 200 members. And so for that, we do events, kind of networking events. But so we have happy hours, which we just changed the name of. But we also have bummer hours. So I mentioned earlier, I have ADHD. So I also have depression and anxiety and all those fun things. And entrepreneurship is a roller coaster. Not that we're more in tune with our emotions, but it's, I don't know, we're just more self-aware and like willing to put in the work. So sometimes you know you need to get out of the house, but you don't really want to talk to anyone. So bummer hour. We hang out in a friend's backyard by her pool. If you wanted to talk to people, like got in the mood, once you got there, then that was available. If you wanted to not talk to anyone, that was not required. Bring a magazine or some work and come do that. Because, you know, sometimes also just anxiety of going somewhere new and meeting new people. So it's just like, you know, I'm gonna have to talk to anyone or bring, you know. So that was my idea, which a lot of the people have never experienced depression. That cut us over like, that's silly. And it was a well-packed event. So yeah, so just stuff like that. And people post in the group. So we have that face-to-face contact, which is really crucial. I think like the relationships are formed, like advertising's not allowed in the group, but we all bite from each other because we like each other. Not because, obviously, we like that person's products and stuff, too. But it's just relationship-based. And, you know, you show up, we find out about your product, and then we just naturally just want to support you because we want that in return. And
Well, that's awesome.
And then 24/7, you can just post in the group and be like, hey, I'm having a really hard time, whether it's with motherhood, parenting, or business. And like, the thread of support is just really amazing. So
That's awesome. I want to get back to the question. First of all, thank you for starting that up. That business sounds amazing. So thank you. Moving to a different topic, you briefly mentioned that you and your ex-husband would talk about issues with the city and whether you should run or not. What would you say were the biggest motivation or motivations for you running for council? Meaning, what are the biggest things you plan to stand for? The policies or ideas?
I personally want to see more out-of-the-box thinking. We're doing a lot of things the same way, the same way everyone else is doing stuff. Or we're scared to just do something that's a little crazy, just to try it. And I think that there's a lot that could be done. I like taking ideas from, you know, I told, I was telling you earlier about this whole motel, daycare, tiny village thing. So I like being able to kind of take all of these ideas and put it together. And I just want to see a city council that's more receptive to crazy, crazy ideas and just innovative stuff that might, you know, put College Station on the map in a good way, you know, other than Texas A&amp;M. And for creatively problem-solving, you know, whether it's homelessness or affordable housing and stuff, like what can we do that, you know, might not work currently with the rules and the laws that we have. But like, let's stay outside the box. And maybe even if it doesn't exist yet, that shouldn't be a prerequisite for, should it exist?
Okay. So you're talking about putting College Station on the map. I feel like that's a pretty common thread with most candidates that I've spoken with. But that implicitly indicates that ideally, you put them on the map, people are gonna come. College Station is already growing at a really fast clip. Its new home prices are going up, up, up. There's, you know, potential for scarcity of any housing, much less affordable housing. What ideas do you have to counter that? Because I agree that we need to grow College Station, put it on the map. But there is a downside, and it's called affordable housing crunch. Do you have any ideas of how to, how to deal with that? It's a hard question.
Right. So not, you know, specifically, particularly. I'm gonna need to learn a whole lot more about it. But again, the, for my tiny housing idea, so I'd look into it. And I was like, okay, well, how can I make this affordable and available to people with lower income? And HUD?
Housing and urban development.
Yes. Well, so to get, and I may be completely wrong. At the point I looked at it, it seemed like to be able to qualify to live and get housing help, they need to be a minimum of like 700 square feet, right? Which with my tiny housing idea, that'd be twice the square footage that, you know. So now this little rule that's meant to help them and protect them is actually gonna come back. Because right, like, it's like, okay, well, needs to be at least a minimum of this. But I live in an RV right now. So I've been doing that for three months post-divorce and stuff. So that's kind of my temporary stuff. But also, I wanted to do a trial run. How's tiny housing, you know, really gonna work? And, you know, I have my daughter. And how will it work with, you know, children? So I'd love to see more RV parks and more trailer parks, you know, whether it's tiny home, you know, lots and stuff, and just allow more of that. I think personally, they're cool. The community in RV, the community in our RV park has been really awesome. The community and, so my tiny village idea came from the trailer park that is, so I'm directly across from Walmart on Texas Avenue. So Brazos Valley Urgent Care is in that. So we're in the back of that. And there's a trailer park that they've been trying to sell that property forever. They're trying to run brothers through. From what I heard, they're waiting on them to make one little mistake to kick them out. Why can't we build something beautiful that's still affordable? Where are those people gonna go when you kick them out, right? Like, you're not gonna be rebuilding, like, you're about, you're about to tear this down. You literally put a light in front of their, like, home with, like, the intention of putting a road through it. And what's your plan for these people?
We know where they're gonna go. They're most likely gonna end up having to go to Brian.
Yeah. And that's different school district, you know, like, just all the things. And but, so, yeah, so that would be, that's something I've literally seen. I've like been trying to think of a way to fix, just because I've, I've seen these people. They've got a great community. They wait together, you know, for the food truck together. Their kids play soccer together. In the front, you, on holidays, you can see them all together. And that's why I wanted to build a tiny village, because I saw them and their community. And I don't know, I thought about the word on the way here. It's like micro-communities, you know, like these little, me wanting to build this tiny village. So it's gonna be for new moms, essentially. So like the fourth trimester, the focus would be on brand-new moms. So you'd have the lactation consultants and just helping you in your new role and just laundry and food. Also, pretty much the two, like, biggest chores. So mom can go back to work or do whatever, recover. So but creating that micro-community, I think, has been really what I really enjoy, like the women entrepreneurs and like doing that. So like, when you're around people that are going through the same thing as you, it's just a lot easier to feel like you belong. And I think feeling like you belong is like a pretty big part of feeling satisfied with life.
We'd like to take a minute to thank the Habitat Restore for furnishing the studio and let you know that everything, and I mean everything, in the video version of this podcast is currently for sale, except the politicians, of course. If you haven't checked out our Restore, you definitely should. The Habitat for Humanity Restore is the Brazos Valley's premier resale shop, where the proceeds of every piece of furniture or decor donated to us go on to help fund building decent, affordable, and sustainable homes for families right here in our community. Here, you can find everything from the ordinary to the extraordinary to the downright strange. Seriously, we've had a stuffed coyote donated, which sold surprisingly fast. Currently, we have a great collection of home furniture, including a china cabinet and an antique Singer brand sewing machine. I might have to buy that one. I'm telling you, before you pay full price for home decor, check out Habitat Restore. I'll put the Restore links in the show notes for you. All right, back to the interview.
I wanted to look at the charter amendments issue. I don't know how much you've, you've followed it, but in November, you know, your name will be on the ballot, along with others running for place six, place four as well. And then finally, these three charter amendments that the city council recently sent to the people in November. One of them is about changing the voting time from even years to off-years. Some people are for it, some people are against it. What's your take on that? Even though you won't, if elected, you won't have a direct say in it, what do you want the people to, to know from your opinion?
So I've actually chatted and did other forums with Elizabeth Kuna. And so she, essentially, the way she explained it was that, and I don't want to put words in her mouth, I guess, the way I understood it, but the odd election years are bad because less people will go vote. We want more people to go vote. And the argument is that, okay, well, that's only the people that are really involved that are gonna go vote. I don't know if I want to say this publicly, but like, I haven't voted in a non-presidential year, even though I wanted to. And maybe I just didn't feel informed enough. Yeah, which is another issue we need to fix. It's super hard to find information. But anyway, so even though I wanted to participate, I just, it was just an extra step and whatever. So but I did vote, you know, in the presidential elections and those. So that logic makes sense. And then also financially, she also explained that when you're running on even years, you're sharing the cost of the election with multiple parties. When you're running on an odd year, like we are now, you're not sharing that cost with the state.
So it's more expensive.
Yes. So it's also more expensive, and it's a waste of money. And I'm not into wasting money. Like, all my businesses have been bootstrapped and like scrappy, you know. So like wasting money is just, especially on things that are counterproductive.
Yeah. Okay. That is fair. Yeah.
So vote no, I believe, on that charter. And but also, the wording is always so weird that you never know, like, are I supposed to answer yes or no to this question? So I believe the answer is no.
Okay. And we got your take on that. If elected, is there one or a couple specific things that you want instituted or you want to fight for? We talk generally about thinking outside of the box. But are there any issues that, that you're like, yes, this is what I want to change if I am elected into the city council, and I'm gonna fight to try to do that?
So, no. I personally don't. I like the way the city is mostly being run. I looked at the comp plan and, you know, from the survey that they did a while back. And it looked pretty good to me. There's things that I wouldn't be able to deal with that, you know, really concern me. But there's other ways for me to create support for that. But mental health and education. So I mentioned earlier that I was thinking about creating a charter or a public school, private school. So in my logic with that is just, I don't, I've been so blessed to have my child in the daycare that I owned, especially during COVID, because I was able to make every decision for my child and then everyone else's child. And I don't think I've had any complaints about how we handled anything during COVID. So that's kind of one thing. And then also, a ADHD is genetic. This kid is very smart. She's about to have a birthday in a month. So we're recording this.
How old?
She's four and .9. So she will be five next year. So she missed the school year this year. So I also fear she'll be too advanced and that she's gonna be bored. She's already bored with my daycare, which is why I want to, I was already looking at expanding. And so, and before, you know, if I don't win, and I'm free, you know, this time next year, we might be homeschooling and just traveling, like doing a traveling homeschool, was my idea a while ago. But I just like to follow her passion, you know. So like, if she's into numbers, we're looking at every speed sign. And we're, you know, it's like, tell me these numbers and let's add them. She's multiplying a little bit, you know, like, she had Q-tips. And she's like, oh, they went from three to six, you know. And it's like, yeah, you know. So just basic stuff like that. But it's just, we've never done flashcards or pushed anything on it on her. It's just been, hey, let's follow your passion. So I don't know. I've, I've heard of these schools in like Silicon Valley by, built by entrepreneurs that just are like, well, I'm, you know, gonna try to do it better. So I don't know. And so when I say, you know, put College Station on the map, it's kind of like for these kind of things, like I, for really good things, but also, you know, whether people come down to live here for them, you know, probably, they're gonna continue, right? So that's gonna be an issue we'll have to deal with. But I don't know, I guess tinier housing, like, I don't know. It's just, I really love the sense of community in those. So I bet you just don't get in a neighborhood. Like, I don't know.
Got you. So one of the, back to a housing question. One of the questions I asked your opponent when we spoke is, we're talking about solutions to affordable housing. And what we both agreed with is that the big issue in College Station is the dirt. It's so expensive. The land is so expensive. And so I threw out as an idea, minimum lot size and maybe taking a look at, College Station's has a minimum where a lot can't be built on that's smaller than a certain number of square feet. And some cities have looked at reducing that in order to be able to try to overcome the cost of land being prohibitive to some people. Do you have an opinion on whether that's a direction to go or?
Makes sense. I mean, obviously, we're talking tiny housing a lot. So like, you know, tiny housing, tiny lots. It makes sense, right? Like, you can make something beautiful and make it look good. Like, yeah, I mean, a planned community with these tiny lots, like, you can still make it very beautiful and feel homey and still have, you know, greenery, hopefully, in smaller lot sizes. And just like, there being a minimum on the square footage for HUD housing, you know, like, it's, if it's no longer helping or protecting who it was intended to, and it's actually hurting them, then, so I don't know, I'd have to find out more about the opposing side of that. Do you know what people that are not in favor?
Yeah. So my follow-up question, what would you say to people that, that say, well, if you build in that way, you know, in a smaller, more dense way, can College Station's fire and police keep up? Are the streets so narrow because you're really trying to maximize the land? Are the streets too narrow to where you have overwhelming parking, to where the ambulances can't get down the street? And so that's a pretty common, whenever you talk about building smaller, that's a common response. I don't know what you thought about that.
I don't know. I mean, like, do we all need front yards? You know, like, if the issue is like, you know, a parking spot or two, and like, you build a beautiful home, a parking spot, like, front yards are unnecessary. So like, that takes out a big chunk of stuff. And if, you know, we, parking is more important, and then all those ambulances, then do a larger communal park, right? Like, everybody can have a small personal outdoor space, but just make sure that there's, you know, that, that green space. So I don't know.
That's a good idea.
Just figure it out, people. Like, it's not, it's not that hard. Just think a little bit outside the box. Like, front yards are a waste of space and
People don't use them a lot either.
No. Like, they hang out in the backyard. Like, you know, yeah, before, when kids were playing in the front yard, and that's how, you know, but that's back to that sense of community. It's like, people don't do that. They don't trust their, you know, trust the cars are gonna, you know, go slow enough or that their kid's not gonna get snatched. So yeah, front yards are a necessity.
So what is
These front yards is my
Yeah, there we go. That's your, that's your campaign.
My platform.
So what would you say is one of the biggest challenges facing College Station as a city in the future, next few years, next decade? Do you have any thoughts on that?
I'm not well enough connected, I think, to know from a personal standpoint. So I don't know. I mean, the whole country is all divided, which we kind of are, you know, as a city with the masks and this and that. And so I, it's not, I don't know. I love this city. So I hate, you know, so honestly, probably housing and the, I don't wanna say education. Okay. So one thing I really dislike is when we go and build like a brand-new school and like literally put marble from like top to ceiling. And then the other school becomes the school, you know, that nobody wants to go to and stuff. And so just that, it's beautiful. But to me, like, I don't know, maybe it was cheaper. I don't know. You know, but that money should have been spent differently because it was not necessary. And so I'm sure, you know, taxes and more complicated than just like give money to both and make sure that they're like equal-ish, you know. Like, I mean, you literally have a brand-new, beautiful school and a really old school that like barely has, like, so anyway, that's more of a school board type thing. But I don't just, I want to be more involved. So I don't like have a platform. Like, I want people to tell me what they want. I'm obviously younger. So like, the whole entertainment and that gap, keeping students that were, you know, essentially billing our whole community around. Like, it'd be great to keep some of them, just because they want to stay and because there's more opportunities here to stay. That goes back now to the housing issue, you know. But you want to talk about the REU, too?
We can talk about it briefly. I'm looking at the time. I know we only have a certain, yeah, we got a couple of minutes. What are your thoughts on it? Because as far as I understand it, it's water under the bridge at this point. And communities can do it if they want to. But it's done, according to the council. Is that right?
Oh, it's done. I mean, it's been voted on. Can it be overturned? Can it? I don't know. Okay. So I don't know how done it is. I'll find out. But I, my main issue with it was that there were two public surveys that asked the community what they thought about it. And overwhelmingly, 75% or more said, no, we don't want this. And the city council did not vote the way they should have as representatives of the people. So
Is that really why you're running? Is the REU issue?
That takes me off. But also, when I went back to go look to see who had voted which way, when I was deciding which place to run for, that was really hard to find again, right? So unless I just remembered, I think it was Mooney and Kuna that voted no?
I can't quite recall, but it may have been 6-1. I'm not sure.
So anyway, so that ticked me off because that's just not the point. I, I'm never gonna listen to people with money more than like you as a person and a resident. Like, I don't either. Hey, you know. So just trying to build things to better our community. And I want to listen to people and like, get to know more about the housing and what we can do. And I'm definitely willing to look at more creative solutions to doing that. So that's what I can promise, is that I'm gonna come with different ideas and solutions and energy, maybe. Unless we vote, unless the city votes William in, you know, be the youngest by a lot. So it's just bringing that representation to in that perspective.
And how can people get in touch with you if they want to learn more about you, support your campaign? How can they do that?
Right now, it's mostly on social media. So you can go and just add me on my personal page, Marianne Mousso Holland, with all the hyphens in between. And then there's a page for the city council race that I also post on. But my private Facebook page is pretty much a public page. I don't I don't post anything on there that, I try not to live a life that like I'm ashamed of. So either or.
Okay.
And my profile is public-public. So you can just look at that. And then eventually I'll have a fundraising sign. And but I, I don't know. I like, I'm familiar with the social media campaigns. And I feel like my, you know, opponent might not be. And I haven't seen much from Adam, look, David. I always want to call him that. From David either. So I'm, I'm spending a lot of time on social media. Might not need to spend a whole lot of money for.
Perfect.
Sticks and boards and stuff.
Makes sense. Well, Marie, thank you so much for joining us on Think Brazos. This has been Marie Musso-Holland, running for place six, College Station City Council.